Tomorrow.
I think it's the earnings. Play City Attorney.
So we'll have to be skipped. Congratulations. Then I know, I mean, I know I've already expressed all that.
Yeah.
I had seen in person the safety negotiations. Another one down. Yeah.
You guys some nice?
I don't think my guys are married, that would actually be a dissonant problem.
All right, we're ready.
No Kyle.
Fran's ready, I'm ready.
We're ready.
Okay.
It's five P M. We'll call the regular city council meeting to order Tuesday, November eighteenth. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father James, please lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most loving God, I give you thanks for the leaders of our community, ask that you would continue to bless them with wisdom, guide their decisions, help them to tend, tend to the things they need to tend to and let go of those things that can wait until later. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item three, which is a public hearing. The Port Aransas City Council will conduct the public hearing on the following items. Hold a public hearing to close out the city of Port Aransas Hurricane Harvey C D B G D R Infrastructure Project twenty zero six five one four three C eight one one. Project was funded in part by the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program in the amount of four million, five hundred thirty four thousand, three hundred thirty five dollars and sixteen cents. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item four, which is citizen comments and reports. We have one speaker signed up. Ms. Simpson, please approach the front.
Hello, Colleen Simpson, three thirty one Paradise Point. I just wanted to. I just wanted to send out a little public service announcement that we have extended our city canned food drive one week. So if you forgot to collect donations, if you feel like you need to empty out your pantries, we'll be doing that. The collection is Friday at three P M. That's the final weigh in in hopes that we earn a city breakfast. So if you help, you can get breakfast.
Um, the city breakfast would mean if we beat the EMS?
No, so.
Cause I'm pretty sure I have seen their load.
We joined together as one unit.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Because no one can beat EMS. They are the greatest. And so I set the goal a little lofty.
Yeah.
We need to get there. So anything you can do to help round up cans, we got one more week to do it.
And all the, just so everyone knows, all the canned food does go to the food pantry.
Helping can food pantry. And it has been so enjoyable to watch all of the cans go to brand new shelves. And the new pantry is just beautiful. So let's help them fill it up.
Okay.
When is this breakfast that we're gonna get?
To be determined when we win.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are three items in the consent agenda. The city council meeting minutes from October sixteenth. A third and final reading for the ordinance, amending the code ordinance, chapter two administration. And then a third and final reading remitting the code ordinance since chapter two administration, article five, financial matters. Anybody wish to withdraw anything or make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Schmiedis?
Yes.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Councilor Krueger?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Fishson?
Yes.
Jefferson Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. All right, item six is our regular items for consideration. We're going to start with item D. It's a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the Port Aransas Independent School District for a twenty five year lease of the baseball field located at seven hundred Clark Parkway, Port Aransas, Texas, setting the responsibilities of each entity, term fees and miscellaneous provisions and authorizing the city manager to sign said agreement.
Okay, so in your council packets, there was a proposed agreement between the city and the school for this lease. And there's been some edits made. The school requested a little bit of a different agreement. And then Councilman Crawford submitted another suggested version. So we have three versions to look at and consider. Basically, all of the agreements are for a twenty five year lease at a dollar a year for operations and maintenance of the baseball field for our high school baseball team. Where the differences occur are in the scheduling authority. So at first, we, the first draft in your council packets talks about the city using our scheduling software. I don't think that that's needed. The school has requested that scheduling just be done through them. So if somebody from the community wanted to host a tournament on the baseball field, they would request it. Just like the use of the track is the school leases it from the Marine Science Institute. If a local soccer wants to play on that field, they request it and organize it through the school. So that was the first initial difference, and I'm okay with supporting the school scheduling all activities on the baseball field. The next was maintenance responsibilities. So the first agreement says responsible for turf, lighting, scoreboard, concessions, bleachers, dugouts, batting cages, trash signage, field prep for games and practices, wherein the city would maintain irrigation. The school draft suggests that the city cover utilities and lighting. Something to note is the school intends to artificially turf the field. They're planning major improvements to the facility, dugouts, turf, scoreboard. And so when we're thinking about what our costs are, when labor is reduced, we're no longer maintaining it. We're no longer having contractors come out and do annual maintenance on it. It's something to look at when the utility bill may not be that much because we're still using it for our main park facilities, the Little League and the tee ball field. So you can weigh that out. I think everything else, both parties have insurance. Thirty ninety day notice if anyone wants to terminate. But yeah, I think the only thing that we need your feedback on and guidance is, well, if you want to do this, and then the usage control and maintenance responsibilities, utilities included. So looking for feedback on that to direct staff and come up with an agreement.
When they put down the turf, will we, the irrigation that's in the field, does that come up as well?
I haven't spoken to the contractor about that, but my guess would be everything gets ripped up. They have to do a drainage system underneath and compaction and elevation. And so it's major construction out there.
Irrigation, other than in foul territories would remain?
The entire facility would be turf. Yeah, outside of the fences. Yeah, and fences are also in their intention for capital improvements. And the way that Dr. McKinney explained it to me was when the school's budgeting for these improvements, it's going to be through a bond. And so big capital improvements are easy to put in the bond. Regular scheduled billing like utilities is not easy to bond. And so.
We cannot.
Or you can't bond. Yeah, so.
So there's improvements will be made unless the bond is approved by voters.
Okay, okay, yeah. The utilities for the lighting, who's been paying that over the last several years? We are always have always done it that way. So we're not changing.
Right.
Okay, we've been responsible.
Something to, if the, in twenty five years, if the lights need to be totally replaced, that could be a major expense. We did just have a light pole hit by lightning at McDonald Field. It's about a five thousand dollar repair. We spend, Darla couldn't be here, but I did pull some numbers to give you an idea of what we budgeted for turf maintenance. Written in one of my notes, we had around nine thousand dollars scheduled for turf maintenance this fiscal year. And then that doesn't include staff time on the fields. That doesn't include utilities, insurance, anything like that.
Irrigation repairs.
Yeah, because irrigation is tied to the entire park, it's best that we continue to schedule it and repair it.
My guess is that all the utilities are tied in together too. So I can't imagine.
It would be costly and. And, and we asked finance to look at, like, do you see a big spike in January when practice starts? And there wasn't a noticeable difference in usage rates month to month.
I, yeah, I think we should continue paying all utilities.
These come up if somebody was going to run a tournament. In the past, would the city coordinate those tournaments?
We didn't have a lot of it. It did start to pick up in the last few years. We did, originally, we were only charging a hundred dollars to use the field. And then we realized like this is too much work to only charge a hundred dollars, but it had never been done before. And then as traffic picked up, we did up the rates this last fee schedule change. So we were going to try and, you know, be compensated more fairly. But really, there's two select leagues that like to run tournaments. There's an overflow league from A and M Corpus that has a big collegiate tournament that has used the field in the past. And then there's like a pony league that comes down as part of a company wide picnic, but there's, it's not a huge.
We'd rather just defer it to the school.
Okay.
Yeah, we're bringing in a lot of revenue.
They could do that.
Yeah, yeah, we just, yeah, just give it to them. So.
So when are y'all doing the turf? When is that gonna happen?
If the bond, if the bond approved by voters, so we already have bond approval to turf the softball field.
Okay.
But we waited on it because we have to beat the baseball field.
Right.
So the goal would be, and again, be the board's decision whether or not to call for a bond election in January, February. And the election would take place in May, but we will have plans ready to go.
As soon as you get that bond passed.
As soon as it.
Yes.
Well, I was just gonna say, one thing I forgot to tell you is the school did pay for fifty percent of a water well that's going in for irrigation right now. So that was a big contribution.
Today.
Yeah, walking by there, yeah.
Because I'll just say, like, that had to happen, the field, and you remember, you may or may not know, last year, but we actually had a family that trucked water over to the baseball field from their well so we could water it. I think we're not allowed to water it right now. City isn't, we're not allowed to water the softball field. We have to, we've dug a well, softball field too. And so that has really made the field all that unplayable because it hasn't had water on it. And then grass doesn't grow, wind blows, and now we've got, I call it moguls, whatever, you know, little sand things going in the outfield, which makes it unsafe. So this is another reason we, like, we got the will. Appreciate Colleen getting those wells dug quick so we can start putting water on it. And, and that's why we're gonna go out for, I'm gonna recommend we go out for a bond to turf it because we're looking at this drop being ten to fifteen years. And there's even question if the wells when dug are gonna hold out. And we've got to put, was it two thousand gallons a day when we reseed it? I mean, it's a massive amount of water to do this. And so for the long term impact for our school, but our community, we've got to make a move.
The turf will be better, yeah.
Infield alone.
Ow.
At first I was proud of our grass and I thought, our guys can do this. And then the drought is just.
Sad and a lot.
Okay, any other suggested changes? So the final version has all the changes that we want to approve, or do we need to footnote or comment on something in the resolution recommendation?
The school's draft is what we've just discussed approving.
Okay, so we're paying the utilities.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And lights and maintenance and.
Maintenance and maintenance and utilities.
Yeah. That's the only changes. Well. Okay, so if we're taking the version that's in the council agenda and changing it to the school's version, there's one other, the use of the premises going through the school instead of through the city. So school usage, city utility, city lights, those are, that's the specifics.
I think mine would read the same, the use of premises and scheduling is just, PA ISD shall have the pri, have priority use of the baseball field during school related seasons and student program. The city shall manage all scheduling through its reservation system, does successor, and P S I D shall submit its annual schedule prior to each school year, but that's.
Yeah, we don't want that.
No.
Yeah, so that we're removing.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the version marked up that I can give to Fran for. Official.
So.
So the motion is.
Looking for a motion with the three with lighting utilities and usage alterations.
For day ISD manages the scheduling, the city manages the lighting and the utilities, correct? I will motion to approve and authorize the execution of an interlocal agreement with the Port Aransas Independent School District for a twenty five year lease of the baseball field located at seven hundred Clark Parkway, Port Aransas, Texas, with the inclusion of school, four day ISD manages the scheduling of the field. The city of Port Aransas manages the lighting and the city of Port Aransas manages utilities.
That sound good?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Krueger?
Yes.
Councilor Owen?
Yeah.
Councilor Schmiedis?
Yes.
Jefferson Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. All right, thanks you guys so much for working together. Get that done.
Thanks you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Oh, yes, that's right.
We'll see you shortly. Yeah. All right, item E, resolution awarding request for proposal R F P twenty twenty five twelve for the purchase of a generator for the civic center in city hall and designating city manager as the authorized representative to act on behalf of the city in all matters related to the bid award.
Okay, so this is replacement of old faithful, which is now gone, the generator. It used to be right outside that wall there. It came to us back in November, or back in October, but we had to pull it because there was duplication of effort between Debbie and Jay, which is the city contractor, and what the bidder gave us. So he had to pull it. The engineer for our M E P project, you know, reviewed their bid and said, hey, here's where you duplicated services that are already in the city contract with Debbie and Jay. So they reworked it, brought it back to us. It dropped about a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, which was great because it was over, over budget. But it was over budget because they duplicated services. So this is the same contractor provider that's doing, that won the providing generators for public safety, public works and fire EMS. So same generator. So now we'll have four of the same generators, which is what we wanted because just makes it easier on maintenance. This generator is, the, the old generator was a two hundred K W. This is going to be six hundred K W. So it'll, the, the old one would not run all of city hall. It would, it would only run, it could not run the civic center, A C or heat. It could only run the, the offices. This thing will run everything. Yeah.
Get going, get a full micawatt.
Just because with, with the ballroom, you know, prior to, you know, the old one, the civic center just being concrete, you could just let it, you know, let it go to a hundred degrees and high humidity and it really wouldn't ruin anything. But the new ballroom, you cannot do that. You have, we have to, it has to be sized to support all the new offices or they will go bad. So that's why it's such a big jump in size. But the prices, we're happy with the price.
And with the new price, Dave, then like an annual service agreement and all that?
Yeah, we would do that. That all comes separately. Yeah.
Just a purchase.
Okay, any other questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution awarding proposal R F P twenty twenty five dash twelve for the purchase of a generator for the civic center in the city hall.
A second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Councilor Schmiedis?
Yes.
Councilor Krueger?
Yes.
Councilor Fishson?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Jefferson Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item F, it's a resolution approving the change order number thirteen for the gas distribution system. FEMA project P three one four one with Equix Energy Services LLC in the amount of one hundred sixty seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, authorizing future budget amendments for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget and authorizing the city manager to sign all documents associated with said change order.
Hello, chief. Hello, all. So this change order will be recognizing, as we're getting to the end of this project, we have a lot of overages or oversights of the initial addresses that could have been missed after Harvey. Or a lot of it is long to short changes or short to long. That just means if the main is on one side of the street and they were planning on connecting on the near side and they had to bore all the way under, that's a long to a short or vice versa. So all these overages are from the initial start of the project to now, and we're just reconciling a lot of that with original scope work to make sure that all our documents are kind of cleaned up as we're moving into finishing this project. So that is what this change order does is rectifies all those overages or just field adjustments that had to be made.
Do you anticipate any more?
No, ma'am. Everything we're, I say everything, ninety nine percent of everything we're working on now is just the work directive side. So all the original scope stuff is pretty much a hundred percent hemmed up. We do have, there are seventeen services that were installed on the front end that could have potentially been part of the work directive. So we will have to sort that out, but that is kind of the only thing that could potentially fit in this bucket.
Come back. Okay.
So Dave, change order two doesn't have an amount to it. Was that just like a? I would just, because I was, we have thirteen change orders, but change order two has no, no dollar amount to it. So not digressing, but just curious of.
I'm not sure. At the top of my head, it could have just been days.
Okay, just.
I'd have to look. I'm not sure.
Three. Not looking at it at all. I mean, there's three. Twenty two point four million in the contract. You got one point three six with this change order, which is about six percent, which they say that six point nine is in range for FEMA funded projects, especially with utilities, because they range anywhere a little bit higher. So whatever that's worth still, I guess, a total in twenty, twenty three point seven million. This project started a while ago. So that's happened just to see that type.
And this, like I said, all this is, is a part of original scope work. It was just, you know, a main might have originally been stopping at one intersection and, you know, for whatever reason, and the field adjustments, they decided to, you know, continue it for, to maybe close a loop and double feed it or whatever, whatever things were. The, the system that you guys had was not as documented, maybe as everyone might have hoped when they were planning this.
No rhyme or reason?
No, that's not bad. Consider no ad. These are, these are, they'll change a lot of ad bills to the system. They went through COVID and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Equix has done the last few months a really good job after we got through that work directive of owning up and having crews every day showing up to work. So.
And you're, you are getting your unit price from the original contract on all this stuff. So that even though this did start way back when, all these changes are part of the original unit price. So you are getting all this work at.
Twenty twenty three numbers?
Yeah, all those numbers, those numbers years ago.
That's unheard of, yeah.
Had their work cut out over here, haven't they?
Okay, any other questions for Jake? All right, we have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution approving change order number thirteen for the gas distribution center system. FEMA project number P three one four one with Equix Energy Services LLC in the amount of one hundred sixty seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Fishson?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Krueger?
Yes.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Councilor Schmiedis?
Yes.
Jefferson Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hello, sir.
Wow.
Evening, everybody.
Your cheat sheet wasn't in my book.
I know, got there a little late because a person that does it, forgot it was Tuesday, I said it Thursday.
Okay, no worries.
Who's the person?
Joanne.
Okay.
I'm telling, I'm telling her you threw her under the bus.
She might be watching, yeah.
She does a good job. Just forgot. Actually, I forgot too. We're starting for public safety right across everybody's favorite building. The inside are doing the courtroom mill work is complete and the mill work in the bathrooms and all the mill work is complete. Courtroom looks good. I hope the judge has seen it, but it looks good, hand rubbed and a little darker than that. Looks good. Special antenna base, we voted on, y'all voted on two meetings ago. That's done, delivered this week. I just saw it a couple hours ago, custom aluminum racks.
That's maybe what he saw coming down the stream.
I think it was, yeah. Yeah.
Three racks. Some fire station could be the same. There's could be two racks. But it looks good. Sparky can be very happy when it gets his antennas on the roof. It's gonna look a lot better than having the original design of the tower out there, and it's actually a little cheaper. Most of the big deal over there is the floors. And most of the floors, they are done and they tried to sand down and redo the county side. And it still does not look that good and Victor's not happy with it. So they're making the contractor fix it. So.
For the fourth time.
Yeah, third or fourth time. And that's pretty much it for public safety. The gas building, the big thing, but the gas building is getting power to the gas building. They poured a slab for the transformer last week. And the city had to get a right away survey done, and it was completed, I believe, today.
Yeah, it was finished today. We signed it.
Officially finished today. And now, once it gets recorded in the courtroom, A E P, they know it's done. Once it's recorded in a courtroom, the courthouse, A E P will, they already have a transformer for us and they're going to install it probably maybe the first week, but probably the second week of December. So the gas building will have power so they can button it up and get after it. So the gas building is going, it's going, okay, one good. Moving on to the fire station, the officially, the second floor remediations are complete. Couple of months ago, I believe we talked about sixteen steel beams getting reinforced on the bottom, all sixteen. The second part was cutting out some of the floor kind of square and putting this special liquid agent in three areas. And I saw it when they did it and I've seen it four or five times. I saw it again a couple of hours ago. It looks really good. Better than I thought. So the second floor is complete and flat, it's flat, not complete, but it's fixed. So now that they'll do the L V T on top of that later. The fire sprinkler, fire sprinkler rough bin is complete, electrical and plumbing rough bin is ongoing. It's almost complete. A lot of workers over there. And you might have seen a crane over there every now and then to kind of go back and forth in public works of fire, or since the same contractor. The steel roof installation is nearly complete. You can see it from H E B. Or since the same contractor, uh, the steel roof, uh, installation is nearly complete. You can see it from HEB. This is a big building, way better than before. Uh, okay, moving on to the gas system. We talked about that a little bit. Um, they're really doing well. There's no safety issues. They haven't hit any lines or anything like we talked about last time. Um, they're coming to the end of the real physical hard work next few weeks. Um, for, there's fifteen subphases. Four of them are completely done. Totally done and signed by the city. So the city is totally responsible for the fifteen. And there's four of them be done next couple of weeks. So the city will own, um, eight of the fifteen here in twelve, fifteen days. And I'll have a better update for you, uh, next meeting. So the actual digging and all that, um, should be wrapping up sometime next week. At the end of December and some of January, they've been doing what's called restoration, just putting sod out, fixing some concrete, put some rock out, stuff like that in January. And they should be wrapping up paperwork and stuff by the end of January. Uh, with no weather issues. So gas system is going fine. Um, moving on to public works, uh, the blockwork, if you've been over there's they've been doing a lot of blockwork. They had to redo a couple of corners, but the blockwork is going good. Um, and they are waiting on some more blocks to come in. Um, and they're still doing mechanical, electrical rough ends, you know, all over there, if you, all sides. Um, and they erected a lot of steel, but they have some more steel just came in and they'll be erecting some more steel here shortly. So the public works is going fine. And the payment, uh, payments approved to date were a little over eighty-five thousand, eighty-five million, sorry. Eighty-five million, not including the ADA. So pending any questions or should I go straight to the dates?
Straight to the day. Yes.
Okay, public safety is still looking at, uh, twenty-eight January, according to the, this is all according to schedule. Um, so Miss Joelle, and don't catch me in the store and hold me to it. Um, this is Victory's schedule. Gas building is thirteen February. Fire station, um, is one April. The gas system, um, by the end of January. Paperwork and all that. And public works, um, I told you on mid-July last meeting, but now they've got uh, thirty weather days from the beginning of the contract, just approved this week. Uh, approved by the architect. They verified it, knocked some of the days off, but, uh, they got thirty days added. So now their completion date is officially mid-July. Okay, any more questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Right. Item H, resolution temporary changing, temporarily changing the regular meeting place of the city council.
Fran? Fran?
Council meeting, and I was directed to ask if we could maybe hold the meetings at the school district. They have agreed. We just have to fill out a facilities form. Uh, we are still looking probably about April to be out of this, uh, room altogether. So, um, we have PA ISD that we can go to as the, as our first, and then the alternate, um, location will be the, um, police department. They should be done and up and running, fingers crossed. So, um, those are the two locations that we're recommending at this time.
Okay.
Yeah. So we should be in here December, January, hopefully February.
And then.
Possibly even March.
But yeah, they, we may need to be out by March, but they're, they're sticking with April.
Yeah, basically, they're not going to blow, they're not going to blast this wall out. Well, I mean, the wall's out, but they'll leave this up until
They're ready.
They're fully AC'd and, you know, everything's conditioned, roof is finished and it's one of the last things they'll do. Then they'll pop this wall and start the entire rehab.
Okay, great. All right.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the temporarily changed locations if necessary.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporarily change of the regular meeting place um, to either the, um, school board council chambers or the, what did we say? The, thank you.
Yeah.
The community department.
Community court. All right. There is a motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Schmiedis?
Yes.
Councilor Crocker?
Yes.
Councilor Crocker?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Fischenson?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Item I is a presentation of the investment report for quarter ending nine thirty twenty twenty-five. Darla is not here.
Yeah, Darla is out.
Review this, David.
Yeah. Um, oh, I just. Excuse me. Yeah, Darla's in Houston. So, uh, you have your investment report in front of you there. Investment listing, all your different tech pool, money market funds, CDs. Any questions? Chuck, you want to give us a report?
It looks good.
Found any mistake?
No, I didn't.
Mayor, any banking insight?
I just think all the rates that we're currently in are really good rates. So if we can keep that money like that for a while, that's, that's a great investment. Let's get a return on our investment. So, yep.
And when Darla gets back, she's back late tomorrow. She'll send you guys out her, her financial report.
Okay. Okay, that is just a presentation. So there's no action on that. So we'll move on to item seven, which is the city manager report.
Okay, here's your, um, handout here for non-FEMA city projects. Civic Center, city, city hall renovations going really good. Really happy with Debbie and Jay. They're doing a bang up job. Lot of people on the, on the work, work side every day. Latest in the civics. If somebody you did a tour, if any of you guys want a tour, just give me a shout, come by. I can give you a walkthrough. They've been doing all the MEP work and the mechanical work in the new, in the new ceiling in the Civic Center. Uh, yesterday and today, they've been painting it all black because it's going to have like a, the, the ceiling is going to be like a bunch of baffles. It's not like a solid ceiling like this. It's a bunch of vertical baffles that are about, I don't know, they're about four inches apart. So if you sat there and stared up, you could see all the grids and everything. But it's all painted so black, you won't be able to see any of it. So, um, that's what they've been working on now. They've been insulating the new, all the new duck work. It gets painted black also. So that's been going on in the Civic Center. Demolition is kind of finished in the lobby. All the, uh, saltia tile, tile's been removed and all the displays have a new home. Well, the bird display has a new home. Uh, the bottom left picture there, that's the exterior siding on the admin side is underway. And then the interior on the admin side is, uh, they're doing all the electrical and plumbing. And then behind us here on the, on the west side here, they have finished all the steel work and have the roof on, and they are starting to, uh, erect the, uh, the walls. So the interior walls are going up. Um, so great progress on the City Hall Civic Center project. Uh, Streetscape Venue Project. The, uh, this vote, the, the, the vote passed sixty-two percent for, thirty-eight against. So, um, I would say that was a pretty strong uh, indication that people want us to move forward with the venue project. So we met with our, our bond team last week to discuss our next steps. Uh, what we have to do is bring, bring you guys a one reading ordinance that makes all the changes in, I think it's chapter twenty-two taxation. So we'll bring that to you guys next month and that'll, that'll set the January first, twenty twenty-six. Um, uh, effective, effective date for the new rate. We'll start, we're working on getting a kind of an advertising campaign out to get the word out. So there'll be a lot of people that have already made bookings for the New Year's under the old rate, but they just have to make adjustments on the fly. So, um, so we'll start getting, uh, kind of advertisement campaign, get something to the newspaper. Um, so people won't be caught too, too much with their pants down. So. Uh, community center renovations. Uh, new decking and railing is completed on the entire front of the building. Uh, another shot there on the right is the, uh, the, the new exterior bathrooms. They're kind of putting a little pergola on top of that. It looks really nice. And, um, uh, also exterior work is the new, uh, ADA uh, ramp system that will, uh, go out towards the new park. Inside, uh, of course, when you redo a building like this and you start peeling away the layers, you find lots of, uh, lots of surprises. So the latest is they started pulling back the oak flooring to do repairs and the entire subfloor is all rotted out. So. Right, Colleen? So another, another fun fixed, uh, hopefully we can get out of it pretty cheap. We got the architect figuring out what it's going to entail. But so that's the latest on the, on the community center. But we saved the building, right? So that's what counts. What's that? Oh yeah, windows are in. Uh, Roberts Point Bulkhead collapse, still waiting on the engineer design um, of that. We should, should be able to get it out. And we're officially at the hundred thousand dollar mark, aren't we, Fran? After tonight. Yeah. Uh, Beach Access Road B, there's a photo right there that's taken today. They are working on the turn lane. It's about a six hundred foot, uh, deceleration lane that comes off the highway there. So they're getting that ready to, ready to pour. And then there's kind of an aerial. And we're still working on with tech stop for traffic signalization. Charlie's Passer Bulkhead Park. Um, met with Edsa this week. So we're still working on, um, how the drought restrictions are kind of making that park project a little bit difficult. But seeing how we can move forward with that. Lifeguard building's still on hold. We need the fire EMS to progress more before um, that property clears up because they're still using it as a laydown yard. So hopefully in about three months or so, we can have enough space in there where we can pull the trigger on the lifeguard building that's been budgeted for two years now. Yeah, two years now. Uh, traffic light at Avenue G and Station Street. Contracts are signed. Notice to proceed was given um, two weeks ago. We had our first contractors meeting last week. Two hundred and seventy day project. The first four months is all just ordering parts. Uh, they'll, we're, we're starting a little discussion work with AEP to get tied into the transformer on Station Street. But primarily it's all, the first four months is just ordering the mast arms and all the different components. And then they come in and start working on their electric service and then they can come in and get it tied in pretty quick. Rec Center, Rec Center's going really good. They, um, those two photos there, I don't know if you've done, done a drive by. The Ross Avenue entry and uh, probably sixty percent of the parking, the lower parking and the upper tier parking is under construction, moving, moving, moving ahead pretty good. And then they're doing the underslab plumbing installation is almost finished. So they're progressing towards getting the, getting everything ready for their slab pour. Uh, we met today with the contractor and the electrical team. They're going to be, uh, the, the gymnasium is all big tip up panels. They pour these giant concrete panels that are twenty plus feet tall. And I forget how wide they are, probably ten, twelve feet wide. And so they gotta, they gotta get all the electrical and IT conduit in the right spot so that, because once you tip up the wall, there is no uh, running, running your line. So we had a big meeting today with Colleen and Peggy and um, the IT people. What company is that? NCS and, um, the Fulton crew, the, the concrete crew and the electrical crew. So we think we got a really good idea of where all the proper conduit needs to go and the, uh, the tip up walls, because they're going to start pouring next week, I think. Is the first ones? Uh, twenty-six is the first pour. Yeah. And then it's probably about, what did they say? Probably a solid. Yeah, so probably a solid month of doing the tip up walls. There's twenty-two panels. Yeah, twenty-two panels. So it's moving. So good, good progress. Um, really happy with Fulton. They're really attentive and, uh, sometimes they move a little too fast and
High quality problem.
But we'd rather have that than, um, you know.
The alternative.
The alternative.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else, Colleen, on the Rec Center?
You want anything added with all the decision taking speak now?
Or, yeah. We think we got it. We think we got it there. We got all the IT. We got all the future. Yeah. Yeah, scoreboards, uh, Bluetooth, Wi-Fi, yeah, speakers.
Good.
Projectors. We think we've.
Covered it all.
Yeah. Yeah, we think we got it.
Expert.
So. Any questions on the non-FEMA projects?
Okay. All right. So we'll move on then to staff reports. And first we have a presentation from our library director, Stephanie. Stephanie, please come up.
Yay.
Yay, welcome back.
Your counsel. I have a little just, uh, infographic of our numbers. I do want to say library visits and computer Wi-Fi users, that's not a hundred percent accurate. Mostly that's because of B. Whenever I have to watch the circulation desk and ten people come in at once, I can't remember to take the first and check people out and issue a library card because I don't do it all the time. So I do everything in slow motion. I sometimes forget that. So, but those aren't a hundred percent accurate. That's just what we, uh, calculate at the end of the year. But all the other numbers are accurate numbers. Does anybody have any questions? Yes. And if, if you wonder, how do we have eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy physical items, but we checked out nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven physical items? That's because our new books are checked out multiple times.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Even though we have eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy items on the shelf, only about fifteen hundred of them are constantly circulating. And then once our books get off the new bookshelf and they go into the regular stacks, they usually don't check out again until somebody discovers a new author to them. Then they'll go back and read all the old ones.
How are the children's programs doing? Are you guys doing reading?
Yeah. Video of summer reading program. Now, Annette is no longer with us, but we hired Mara and she's doing a wonderful, wonderful job. But Annette did complete this at the end of summer reading program. So what you're going to see there is, uh, Annette's work of summer reading program.
All right.
Any questions?
Good job. Okay.
See you, baby. So if you could guess what the theme for next year is, it is Unheard the Story, but it's gonna be all about dinosaurs.
Oh, very cool. So are you gearing up for your winter Texans to start showing up, or have you seen them already?
Pretty scared for that, I mean, just my regular patrons get upset because they have nowhere to park in. I have no idea what I'm gonna do when the Texans get here.
Free parking in Port Street Parking Lot.
I'm gonna have to, we're gonna have to get the part-time person to just trolley people from back and forth from over there. Because I mean, they're all retired, you know, I mean, that's.
It's gonna be a little tricky. Yeah. Right.
Playing those bikes with a little.
It's okay, you, you, you did a great job, thank you, Stephanie, and I want to thank you again, my mayor youth council meeting that was there was great, and the kids that got to spend some time at the library, I thought it was really good to have them exposed to that, you did a great job, so thank you for letting us be there and.
And I don't know if Mara's contacted y'all yet about, I did, remember I brought up that one program, so if she did send you an email, just whenever y'all are ready for that video recording.
Thank you.
For those books. Okay, thank you, great job, Stephanie. All right. Next is Accounting Finance Darla, no.
No, she'll mail it out.
Yeah, no, I know. Next is Development Services Director, Ms. Nicole Boyer, please come up.
So mine is pretty short and sweet. So far this year, we have ninety permits issued, which is a little short of what we've done in previous years, but we've had a lot more bigger things submitted towards the end of this year. Code enforcement, we've opened forty-nine cases up in October, kind of the listing there. The Beach Lodge, the Brumley and the White Street demos are all complete, they look wonderful, and it's been lovely. Code enforcement over the last few weeks has officially taken pictures of every sign in our city. We're starting to send letters out to let people know, you know, the new sign ordinance and kind of how we can help them come into compliance there. Total short-term rental, or short-term rent, short-term registrations is three thousand two hundred and fifty, which is about two hundred more than we had this time last year. We have four that are pending, which means they've paid for the registrations, but there's something that they need to get straightened out, whether it be a permit or an old tax bill due before those can move forward. She completed another ten inspections, we received no complaints for the month of October. She did issue fourteen citations, seven each to two different properties for not registering, not paying hotel rental tax, and so that will be collected and moved forward. She has already approved six, twenty twenty-six registrations, and she's got another thirty-eight.
Nicole, I'm, I'm glad that you're already being proactive and getting things advanced for the new site ordinance. That, the ordinance that we passed. Will there be an easy way for someone to go to the website, find the ordinance and read it so they know the appropriate changes to be made?
Sure, so we're gonna post it on the Development Services website, we're gonna indicate that that's where it can be found until it can get in Unicode. Francisca could probably speak better to how long it takes from an ordinance to get from your hands to, to online.
To online.
But we do have a version of the approved ordinance that we will put online.
Okay.
On our city website.
Because I've had some people already ask, like, where is, where is the new code, where can I find it so that I know that I'm gonna be in compliance, you know, do some planning, so.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people reach out to me, we've sent it out to a lot of people, and we've had those discussions.
Okay, super, that's great, appreciate that. All right, any other questions for Ms. Boyer? All right, thank you very much, ma'am. Next EMS Director, Daniel Johnson, welcome, sir.
Okay, short and sweet as well, a hundred and five calls in the month of October is a little uptick from previous years. And response time, four minutes and seventeen seconds, which is continuing to get better, which is good. Yeah, pretty quick when we get to your house. And that's the time from the, that they actually call nine-one-one to when we're actually on scene, so it's pretty good. Definitely beating the Texas and the national average.
Where's the Texas average?
I don't have it on. I think it's around thirteen, sixteen minutes.
Ooh, really?
That's the average, really?
Yeah, I can get it for you after next meeting too, because you'll have the national and the Texas.
I guess the big cities slow it all down, don't they? Yeah.
Congest traffic.
And then just, you know, well, the big cities aren't too bad, but you get in the rural, rural areas where
Oh, yeah.
Thirty minutes, forty minutes to get a call, so this really hurts the average.
Right, yeah.
October is a busy month for EMS, you know, trunk or treat and got there and we decorated the ambulants and took pictures, everybody gave away a bunch of good stuff, Channel Vista, the Halloween, of course, we shut down the neighborhood and sit out there for that. I went and spoke at the mayor's youth council, which was nice, and thanks for inviting me.
Of course.
National Night Out was another big one, and then we do Trinity, they put on a fire prevention and we go do a show and tell, and they get in and out of the trucks and the fire goes, EMS goes, and then we go inside and we do a whole class form inside the classrooms as well. So that's always great, a bunch of cute little kids, love it. We did AED, First Aid, Stop the Bleed at Presbyterian Church, went over there and, and gave them a class, and then, of course, I went over there and set up all their new AEDs for them, and so now they should have AED in all the buildings and then, and their staff has all been trained as well. Coast Guard Training, they do some OC spraying, and so we're on standby over there for that whenever they get the new coasties in town and make sure everybody goes, well, and then cross-country send-off, so, like I said, it was a pretty busy month, and of course, I can't drive every single night, so it's a.
Somewhere collecting.
Yeah, the first couple of weeks, everybody thought there was emergency everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's gotten used to it now, so.
I know, everybody's like, what are all the, what are the EMS doing at IGA, or, well, they still say IGA, at Lowe's? I was like, probably can't drive, yeah.
Yeah, we did that, and then Dollar General this year, Spicy Blue, so tried it out.
How Dollar General pay out?
It was good, I mean, there was, there was a couple of slow days, and then they had, you know, a couple of really good days, so we just kind of ran them, but I definitely, I think Lowe's is
Yeah, big winner.
Any questions?
Nope, but kudos to you as well, we did the same mayor's youth council, library slash EMS on the same night, and they, they really enjoyed getting the tour of the shop.
Yeah.
And, 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 and the ambulances and the, and the information that they learned is awesome, so I can't wait to, hopefully we'll give everybody a tour and.
Well, Steph, I want to get the information.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be a big difference, right? Yeah, great job. Okay, thank you, Daniel. All right, police, James Stokes. Don't believe he's here either, so Lieutenant Hannett's all you.
Summary of our calls for service, we had two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine total incidents. Ninety, five hundred and seventy-two nine-one-one calls, thirteen for animal control, thirty-five for precinct four, hundred and one for EMS, Daniel mentioned, ten for the fire department, sixteen calls with game warrants, they help us out a lot, they're near a lot, it's good. And eleven calls for the lifeguards and twenty-two utility calls. For arrests, thirty people arrested in October, forty-two total charges. Six were arrested on warrants, seventeen were for alcohol-related offenses, including one for DWI. Two were drug-related, three were charged with assault-related offenses, and one was charged with deadly conduct, and I'll do a little summary on that at the end here. Traffic citations, two hundred and forty-nine total, the bulk of those are the beach parking citations, or a hundred and eighty-two of those. The rest were twelve for speeding, ten for no insurance, five for minors with alcohol, tobacco, or some type of drug-related violation. And seven golf cart-related violations, and then one, a bunch of other categories where there were one or two miscellaneous. For our staffing, we have twenty-seven sworn positions, and we have twenty-five of those are filled, twenty-three are filled with our current officers, and we have two additional hires that we're bringing on on December second. And one of our officers that left, it was for retirement, Todd Thompson. So I wasn't anybody to another department or any other reason, so that's. We have one dispatch position still. Our community events, so we had National Night Out on October seventh, lots of people out there, it was really fun, bounce houses, dunking booths, trunk or treat, we're out there with EMS also, and gave a lot of candy, it was fun. And then Halloween night in Channel Vista, and our officers and dispatchers walked around the neighborhood and saw the kids and also gave them candy then too. And two significant events I'll go over, on October second, at one fifteen AM, our officers went to a disturbance at the Thousand Block of Highway three sixty-one at a bar. They had a report of a male involved in a fight that displayed a firearm, he left in a silver pickup. The officers located the vehicle on a traffic stop at South Alistair. The vehicle continued Avenue G and they finally stopped a little bit later. And they found drugs in the car, a handgun, they reviewed surveillance video from the bar, and the driver had pointed a gun at multiple people in the bar.
Ooh.
Left. Didn't shoot anybody, so that was good. And so he was arrested for deadly conduct, which basically what that is, if you display a firearm, a fire firearm in reckless disregard for a building or a vehicle, tampering with physical evidence for hiding some evidence, possession of drug paraphernalia, and bringing the weapon into a bar, which is a charge of places where weapons are prohibited.
What were they fighting over?
They didn't really say, just sometimes they have too much to drink and they're not, they shouldn't be at the bar with everybody else who's trying to have a good time, so, yeah, they, they lost their cool over something. And the passenger was, was intoxicated and couldn't be released to anybody, so they were charged with public intoxication. On October twelfth at four forty-eight PM, the officers got a call on the beach near Pole Four, is actually multiple calls. A male had strangled a person and bit them on the head, punched a female who was pregnant in the face, and then also strangled another person on scene. So when the first officer arrived, that male was running away. They ended up catching up to him, they had to struggle with him to get him into custody, a couple more officers arrived, and actually lifeguard also helped the officers out too. The man wasn't injured, and the officers weren't injured when they got him into custody, and you put up a good fight, but we're doing a lot of training, we're, we're getting really good at.
The jujitsu training.
Yes, really good at being able to control people that are combative and not causing them injuries and not having the officers get injured, so it's good for everybody. He was charged with assault and pending breathing or circulation, assault of a pregnant person and resisting. Yeah, quite a, quite a situation.
He doesn't get to come back.
Yeah.
He does not. And that's all I have, so.
I'm glad the jujitsu training's paying off.
And some wrestling too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Rest in peace.
That's impressive, thank you very much, you.
Great report.
Okay. All right, well, we are at item nine, which is city council comments and items for future consideration. Anybody have any?
What's the Marlin Classic schedule?
It starts Thursday, tomorrow's Homecoming Parade in the afternoon at five PM through town, first responders are gonna lead that parade as usual. And then Marlin Classic kicks off at, I think the first game might be at eight-thirty, but our boys and girls will play throughout the days, Thursday and Friday, and then Saturday, of course, so. Yeah, three days, three days in a row.
Either the boys play ten AM Thursday and the girls play ten AM Friday, or vice versa.
Yeah, and then they both play the last games of the day, right, yeah, at nighttime, for sure, so, yeah, no, it's, it's great. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving next week, it's already the end of November, so.
You see our seventh grade boys won sixty-seven to nothing last night.
Got some skill. A lot of basketball ahead of us, yeah.
Twenty-four minutes of play.
Who was the team?
I mean, the girl, their girls did pretty well.
We stopped playing them, I thought they went down to.
They came back.
Came back.
The eighth grade boys had to fight.
Yep, we're back, we're back in action, back in district with Pettis.
And the seventh grade girls lost to Pettis, so.
Okay, all right. Where's Jurn?
Yeah.
There's basketball.